We're in the City Fruit Heights. We are starting at seven o'clock with an anchor location, nine ten South Mountain Road, Fruit Heights, Utah, eight four zero three seven. My mic is on. It is on, yes. Uh, we're gonna begin this meeting with a pledge of allegiance. It's gonna be led by Flo, and then we're gonna have a thought or prayer by Gary Anderson. Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the great republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
Our dear heavenly Father, we're thankful for the opportunity that we have to meet. As city leaders, we and city staff, we ask you to help us as we go throughout tonight's meeting that we might be able to have decorum and thy Spirit to be with us, to help us to find the best solutions for our city. We ask you to help us and bless us in all that we do and say. We ask for these favors in the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
Item one point three is small call, Haley.
Councilmember Gary Anderson?
Here.
Councilmember Mark Patrell?
Here.
Councilmember Iain Moss?
Here.
Councilmember Ford Sadler?
Here.
Councilmember Sean Stevenson?
Here.
Mayor John Warren?
Here. Thank you. Item number one point four is training. Put three minutes on all right agendas for elected officials to train on our responsibilities. Uh, tonight is my responsibility. Um, and this is actually kinda funny. So, short-term rentals is a situation, is an issue that all cities in Davis County are dealing with. Um, so looking through this, our responsibilities, uh, I actually, just gonna read real quick. Short-term rentals, you can regulate short-term rentals to some degree, but not make it illegal to advertise a short-term rental in a house or home on a, on the internet, or use the advertisement on the internet as exclusive evidence for a person, that a person is violating an ordinance you may have against short-term rentals. The advertisement can be used as long as you have additional evidence of a violation. This does not mean you cannot prohibit or regulate this, the number and locations of short-term rentals. Um, it has limits to, it just limits how you do that. I thought it was talking about this. We cannot go on short-term rental sites and identify locations in the city using advertisements. I, uh, actually do know. Uh, we haven't used that yet, um, but I very clearly say that is not something we can use to identify short-term rentals that are, could be potentially illegal to be used within the city. Just keep that in mind. Uh, item number two, moving on, sorry, moving on. Item number two is declaration conflict of interest. Do we have any this evening? Let's see if we're hearing anything. We're gonna move on to item number three, which is public comment period. If somebody agenda to allow any residents to, um, take feeling like to the city council, we ask you for your comments in three minutes. Do we have anyone who would like to say anything this evening? Let's see if we're hearing anything. We're gonna go to item number four point one, which is the Y C C report. Ladies, please step up and tell us your name. That'd be great.
Hi, my name is Bella Riggs.
My name is April Jennings. We're coming in the city council. So, for our activity in May, we did a kickoff, all the members coming in. We have twelve new members coming, so that's exciting. And we did, like, some get-to-know games and lunch, and then we planned our activities for the rest of the year. Um, and then our activity for this month, we're gonna go on a hike with this kind of values council.
Excellent.
That's it.
Um, I noticed on the group week thread that it says we need a five hundred dollar grant received.
Yes, so there's an opportunity to get five hundred dollars for a grant. Uh, so, we're gonna get twelve volunteers from the city council to go volunteer, and then after that, we're gonna get five hundred dollars.
I'll assume you have to earn it.
Yeah.
Um, are you going to participate in the lagoon kickoff, or what, what are you doing? Do you know? That's, oh.
That's C T C.
That's through C T C.
But you should have trained.
Right, that's through C T C.
Oh, well, I know.
Oh, okay. Anyway.
Okay.
Excellent, nice job.
See, you just have to, so what is it that twelve people have to do?
No, it's not, that's how many people are joining our council this year.
Yeah, that's, we're volunteering.
Oh, wow, there's twelve, okay, sorry, there's twelve people coming in, and yeah, twelve.
We're not sure, is anyone, uh, will you still not want to turn to help with something? We don't have details yet, but.
How soon is that coming up?
Um, that is June twentieth. Yes, June twentieth.
Good luck with that.
Excellent.
So, I, I can tell you a little bit, that's an activity that the community that cares is putting on for a couple different youth activities at a park. Um, and part of the grant that went in, they used to be possible by parties that they would participate in some of the different activities. And so that's why they're volunteering that activity to help run different things, different stations that they have there, um, with the apparatus, youth, and families.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Thank you, ladies. Is there anything we can do for you?
Uh, we're good.
Excellent. Thank you so much. Thank you for coming today.
Thank you.
Okay. I'll move you on to discussion items. Item number five point one has been tabled for next city council meeting. This is an item, the development agreement for the high major states. Um, I put a hard deadline on this, and because the information is not out of the city council in time, um, we have to postpone this to make sure all the city council have, has the time necessary to review all this documentation. This will be available to you very soon, uh, for you. So, we'll go over to the agenda. Um, item number five point two, Darren Parks.
So, uh, as you know, we budgeted money this year for park improvements. Uh, and as I've talked with the staff, we really want the council's involvement in a lot of improvements they like to set up. Uh, I know that the staff, probably works, had a few that residents have talked about, uh, pickleball courts, uh, playgrounds, or the Allison Farms, it was outdated, and there's some urban parks on that we can't.
Is that the one on the west side of the freeway?
Yeah, it's on the west side of the freeway, it's down.
Okay.
So, yes, uh, just having one of those subdivisions over there after the playground, I think it's fallen apart, and we can't find a replacement for the parks. So, it's, it's time to replace that playground. And then we, the, uh, the bowery that we talked about earlier, the spring, about, uh, the, I think it was part of, and what direction we want to go on that, if we want to do it in closed bowery, if we want to tear it down and just start replacing one bowery at a time, but we're looking for a direction in the council for individuals to talk to you about what they would like to see in their parks, so that we can start preparing to go out and get bids and do that process.
Let's, let's, if I can just hook you down to the line and, and.
Okay.
Is that right?
Yeah.
Are you already gone on direction with parks?
Yeah, I've heard a lot about pickleball courts. I like that idea. You know, you could get a couple, maybe a couple one or two here, you know, start out both sides of the city. Uh, that playground equipment, that part over there, could use some improvement. Now, with the bowery, my thought process is to do, you do something like we have now, how many, we pose thing, um, if anything, you've heard about it on that one. The other thing I thought of is long eighteen hundreds, like we talked a couple times, maybe a pick-me-table two or three along there. There's a lot of people that go up there to see the sunset, and do a lot of watching. Could have, could be made a little grass area, a tree to replace along there with a pick-me-table. There are bowery, just, and bowery, like, we have on back here.
Yes. Flo, where are we going?
Uh, I've written, look at the bowery, yeah, I think they probably do need to be improved, and also the, well, I guess that includes the pick-me-tables, right?
Yeah, if you tore down one of those bowerys, you'd re-raise everything.
Yeah. I, I agree with Mark, but we don't probably, with an enclosed one, that's a whole other building to have to maintain, so I don't feel good about making that a whole reception bar or whatever. I think that that would, we can make some nice boweries. Uh, I do like the idea that if we could, and maybe this isn't part of improvements because it's not a park yet, but I would like to really see us move on from the memorial garden. And it doesn't even have to be a very green garden, but just something organized that people can put their cremains in. It would be a small, smaller than a cemetery, less expensive, but peaceful and beautiful up there. And maybe even with, um, a pick-me-table, because some people like to go to places and spend time. Maybe you have that one.
Um, so, I just wanna ask a question is, so obviously the, with the, uh, the park and the, you know, the bowery, I, I know that the, the tables are in really bad shape. So, I, I think it's almost a necessity to, to replace those. Um, but I'm just, I guess I want to, to know, how are the boweries themselves? I mean, is it, are they in really rough shape and need to be replaced?
Yeah, it's, the concrete underneath is slippy and cracking, um, and all those kinda things, so.
So, it's, it's kinda, we really.
Take the one section out and rebuild it.
Okay, so, yeah, that's something that I could, I could see getting behind. I, I feel like it's something that's, um, worthwhile. Um, I could, um, I could even, uh, consider doing, uh, the thing that Flo has talked about, the.
Memorial garden.
Memorial garden. I, I haven't had a lot of time to think about it, but, um, it seems, it seems reasonable, like, we could potentially do something there. I don't, I'm not sure though, I'd kinda wanna see what we're, what we're really talking about, so.
Um, so, couple things. Um, I did have, had people mention that, that northeast side does not really have, uh, any type of playground area. We are getting property up there with award property, and the question was, could we eventually kind of plan towards getting some sort of a, a play area on that northeast side, um, potentially with that award property? Another thing is the possibility of using park impact fee funds, because to, you know, to do, some of these things can be done with impact fees, because they're new things. Uh, but potentially a single-stall restroom in association with, you know, as you talked about, maybe a memorial park, um, a single-stall restroom at the, just right off of, uh, Southeast Oak Street there. Um, you know, Darren, you know, I had talked about this ability to, there's sewer, there's water, there's fiber, so we can have a locking door, and, and just a, a place so that, you know, our bikers and our people who are, are potentially up there in a memorial park could have a restroom that they could use, um, and keep things a little cleaner. Um, the other thing is the pickleball court. There are a lot of people that want the pickleball court. Um, one thing that I've seen done in other places is on those pickleball courts, they are so popular, that, um, is that the, the kind of thing that you can announce as a city, where we want to do a pickleball court, the city will be willing to put up, you know, fifty percent of the money, if there's fifty percent matching money, and then we really see how many people really wanna put their money where their mouth is, and, and maybe, you know, hype it up and, and have a little fundraising party to see if we can't, um, do pickleball courts that way. Just a couple of thoughts.
Um, Sean, before you go, I just, I forgot one thing, Darren. Um, with the road going across, the, the start to the bike trails, bike park is, uh, it seems, I've been told a few times that it seems like there's no starting, and it seemed like we had talked about, the guy was gonna come back and just, I, I guess, I don't know, like, make, 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 the trail builder was gonna, kind of, reintroduce a, a starting point for those trails, but.
Okay.
I think that's something that, I don't know if, you, I, I suspect maybe you already have plans, but I don't, I don't know really.
That's, I, I didn't know where the starting point was to begin with, so, besides just have a parking lot.
Yeah, just kinda got wiped out.
Are there spots to start that?
It really kinda got wiped out with the road being put in, and now people are kind of a little bit confused at where they should start.
Okay.
It, it doesn't seem like it's a, a major thing. It's kinda just, I don't know, maybe we go up there one time and look at it, but whatever. So, sorry, Sean, thanks.
Okay.
Um, one of these, because I've read a lot of data, which is, it's a problem, you know, I just think that's a big one, I could buy that, that's over. Something after, plus that one was, it took a long time to find. But, um, I really do like, um, Memorial, I think it's higher than, to me, it's a area that we can't reach. And Memorial, I can kind of answer, it's a cost, I mean, those. I would still consider caution about putting that one there. They already have issues with this and that, we're gonna manage a lot of them. And there's a lot of that one up there, it's just, it's pretty, pretty close.
Okay. So, just as a recap, I think we can go through one more time, just, um, it sounds like, from what I've heard, to start probably more slowly on replacing the boweries, maybe one at a time.
Yeah.
Um, and probably, let's look at cost. Uh, it sounds like there is an, an out type for enclosure, but to keep it open. Um, I appreciate the proposals that you and Eileen have gotten on enclosed, but I like the idea, but I just don't know if that's, that's a feasible problem. Um, number two, I hear pickleball quite a few times. Um, on that, in talking with other cities, um, specifically the parks in casual, uh, they would highly recommend not putting in lights. Um, the reason for that is sunup, sundown. Uh, summertime has plenty of playtime, and the wintertime, uh, it's cold, and so the expense of lights is unnecessary, and additionally, uh, you have neighbors in the area that complain when people are playing till ten o'clock, and the noise. So, I, I would thought, see, actually, potentially looking at doing one at a time, uh, because when you put two of them together, the price of concrete doesn't double, it almost triples. Especially, uh, post.
And so, post-tension concrete that you use, uh, you're, you're better out to do at least two. It's when you jump to the four.
Okay.
Um, because it becomes such a, a much bigger border that you have to do. That's where, uh, you see a really big increase. Um, but, yeah, I, I would recommend at least, if you're doing two at a time.
Okay.
So, there's two right next to each other. I think if you were to do the post-tension, so, they have to do.
Um, and then lastly, on pickleball, I've also had people suggest not putting in, um, fencing all the way around, and saying on costs, you can do fencing in the middle, and fencing on hens, but down the middle is not as big of an issue.
Oh, on the inside, down the middle?
No, do it on the inside, down the middle, but on the outside, down the middle. Uh, I, I, I don't know. Um, and then lastly, I would also, with pickleball, throw out the idea of not using post-tension concrete.
So, I would, I would go back on that one for the fact that your courts will last a lot longer, and stay more level. Uh, you start not using the post-tension, that's when you start seeing cracks, and your concrete lifting is twisting.
Let's, let's chat sometime, because, yeah, I, I, I know a couple that have not used post-tension, and they were just fine. Let's chat.
Okay.
Um, so it sounded like bowery.
Bowery, pickleball.
And then Memorial, or, or.
All right, I think what, there's, if you were to look at those three things and get some ideas of pricing.
Yeah.
About one thing. Uh, because we love the A B trail, that, we so like the A B trail.
Uh-huh.
Okay, and it's so peaceful and beautiful down there, and it's really unhavened for people, not just from our city, but all around. And so, if we are serious about pickleball courts, may I suggest that we put them here instead of there, so that the noise, uh, because pickleball is really, I love to play, but it is noisy, and the noise carries. And I would hate to have the, that kind of noise traveling down into what people perceive as a place of refuge from city noise.
Sorry, if you're going to put them here, would be better more behind the buildings so that we're not obnoxious or anything for the fear.
Something to consider.
Well, I like those, those. So, they're actually a big job out there. They just went to a million dollars.
Does it count as three priorities?
I'm not overly excited about pickleball, but if everybody else is, then that's great, that's.
Very welcome, it's just cost.
Yeah, actually, I, actually, that's, that's true. I'm not necessarily against other than I, it sounds like a fortune.
It is a question, then you put an extra zero on there, that's what you gave, by the way.
Did I do them at two and a half million?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, it's a thousand. Two hundred and fifty thousand, sorry, per court, uh, for two courts.
It, it, it seems like more than we have in our budget, maybe I'm not.
So, I, I will tell you right now, I budgeted two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Um, if the project can use impact funds, we would look at transferring the impact funds to our cover. So, replacing the boweries, that, you know, that's not something new in the park, that's something that we're replacing, rebuilding, that would be eligible for impact fees.
Okay.
Pickleball courts, yes, that would be available for that.
Okay.
Um, I believe a memorial could be portion of it, restroom up there could be a portion of it.
And if we.
Uh, certainly, and it's a percentage.
And if we did.
Each one of those things is a percentage, you can't run the whole amount for that, but a percentage of it.
And if we did something like what Eileen had suggested, of having people donate.
Yeah, do something like that, yeah.
That would.
We, we could get some donations, interesting.
Uh, there's been a lot of individuals that have contacted me saying that they would be willing to talk to residents and go out and, um, help provide the funds.
Yeah, if, if, if people, if people were willing to donate, and we can use those funds, I'm, I'm starting to be one over a little bit there.
So, there are, there are impact fees that we should be probably be using this year and next year.
Okay.
Just going, starting to go through the timeframe of when they were collected, and whether you stay lost in the timeframe that you have. And, uh, I think that I'm in the process of getting ready to start a year, do that to see if there is a percentage that we have to have to spend this year. Uh, that has come up as I've been talking to you, so.
Okay. Yes.
When you mentioned Ellison Park, I think it's valuable, how much would be, would it be to help that playground?
So, that's about a seventy thousand dollars. They, they talked to a couple different, uh, playground companies, and it's about seventy thousand dollars of playground to, to do. Yeah, I think that's two comments, that one, one line. Is there a lot of children over there, or is that neighborhood growing, so it's not quite as many children, but I think, you know, maybe just try to focus on that part of our city. And then on the pickleball lights, the two cities you talked about there, you may have them now, but they won't come. It's over at Chapel Park, and, like, they have lights, and I know they shut off on that, but. But in the fall, winter, it's, the, the, the ones here, school issues. So, I like the idea of, like, it's not that good, probably.
Takes a little bit, but.
Because there's been a lot of people talking about it.
Yeah, it, it's nice, but I don't think it's necessary after the sun goes down. Thank you, I, I appreciate the conversation.
Thank you.
I appreciate it.
Yeah.
Can move on to item number five point three, which is a three A update, have a three A update.
Hey, can you bring that up, please? So, I've actually, I have a couple of red changes since I've sent this out to the, the council that I highlighted you, uh, read, and I talked to a couple of different council members, uh, about this.
So, kind of, thank you. Councilmembers for, for coming and talking to him, and, and expressing your, your thoughts. They, they're, they're good comments, and I appreciate you talking to me before the meeting.
So, uh, I've sent out a couple of emails to residents and also to the council about, uh, the planning commission and our current rules. Um, right now, as you look through our, our organs, it's a, a two cents standing for our organs. Now, um, there is a, a document that was in two thousand twelve, or before two thousand twelve.
Two thousand seven.
Two thousand seven, um, two thousand six, that, um, was adopted back then, um, and then there was a change in two thousand twelve, where it just brought it to the one cent. We don't know if that was a typo, we don't know if that was just something got changed and never taken care of, or what, but we, we've been using one cents for our planning commission as far as what we put out to the public.
Brandon Green thinks that it was a typo, and that there was never, it never came to the council for those changes.
All right, so my videos are the wrong ones, say some, I will tell you, uh, as, as, not for a minute. So, uh, I've worked with, uh, our attorney, we've gone through, we've, uh, updated to current law, some of the stuff in the planning commission. I spoke with, um, council member Moss today, and we, I forgot to put in the districts. We do districts for our planning commission. Um, I knew we did districts, but as I put this all together, I did not put in districts, so I, I've put districts, uh, added that in there, showing that we have districts, where we pick our planning, and then we have one planning, uh, commission member that is at large, that represents all the districts. Uh, I also added down on D, uh, this is talking about term limits, and those items that are on that, um, they're, they're talking about maybe three terms. Um, I did add that a member may stand up to six months if we cannot find a candidate to fill it. I also added, um, filling a vacancy or a vacated seat in the middle of it doesn't count towards your term, um, if you want to do it that way. I'm not exactly sure how to, to word it, I just was looking at other cities and how they, uh, worded the document as far as continuing terms or ending up in the middle of term, you know, just.
So.
And I added it to that, how they presented it.
So, one, one of the things there too, is, I like how you worded it, uh, Darren. Um, the two consecutive terms is a change. We have had three consecutive terms in there. Um, speaking with Brandon Green, his opinion was, the first three years you're trying to learn, the second three years you're worth something, and the third three years is just bonus. And so, he, he said, gosh, if you're making a change, why not make it twelve years instead of nine? Is, is, was his opinion of it. Um, and so, um, I think, you know, when you look at our planning commissions, sometimes we struggle. There's, there's, sometimes meetings are three, three members only, and just trying to get people involved, and so, I, I'm not sure why you change it to three, but that's something the council can weigh in on. I mean, to, to six years.
To, to talk about, yes. Um, also, so that was that session, uh, if, if you go down just a little bit further, Haley. Uh, it was talking about the ethics of removing of a, a council member, could have seen a manager there. I took that out of the air. I believe that the mayor is appointing a person through the council.
So.
I, are you retiring on that one too, that the mayor should be the one to say, um, well.
Question on that.
Yeah.
So, one in two thousand six, because this is the last argument we had, is have a full, or.
Officially adopted.
Um, and this one talks about how the mayor, I think, and it talks about how, when, when removing a new board, uh, they're gonna send him to the ma, the mayor's over by the hearing for this council board, uh, may there's a statement or a rule, like. Currently, it states that it's, the ma, where is the mayor, uh, hearing, or something.
So, the, that one I, the way I took that, you don't have to, but if that individual wants one, then you would have.
So, as it reads right now, it's on the, the mayor can say, you are off planning commission today without any advice from the city. But when it comes to appointments, and also, um, coming on the new one, it says, with consent of the city council, what is consent? One person, it's authority, this.
This is very.
So, for appointments, there is a consent, you're coming to the council, but for a rule, you're not, to me, that's kind of, a rule would be a violation. So, it has to be a wing violation.
But, but.
So, for that code.
It doesn't seem like, help, help me understand how you.
So, what's wrong with the word before?
I guess below it says.
Brad wrote that way.
It says it caused, included, it's not limited to.
I understand, I understand.
I mean, seems like it.
Brad, and, and Brad wrote it as, I will tell you, Brad wrote it as the city manager. And. I, I agree. I like it better. It's not the city manager.
No, I.
Under that, I, I think it should be the mayor. Uh, as I read it, it does say if that individual doesn't think it's correct, you have the opportunity. And, and I believe that's what it is, is your opportunity to have a public hearing at that time where the city can also.
I feel like it's ambiguous the way it's written now.
Well, right now, right now, it says cause shall, shall include but not be limited to. That's what it says. And so, really, let's just talk plain English. It, really, if, if somebody's needs to be removed from the planning commission, probably the city council should be involved, especially if they're involved with appointing them.
And it.
I mean, the mayor too, of course, but.
But the way it was written back in the previous iteration in the two thousand six, I think it's a better way of stating it. Because it does say in there that it comes to a hearing of the city council and the majority of the city council can reinstate that member or not.
Well, I think you're right on limit to. There's other.
That's fair.
There's other violations though that are not exactly in that ethics code or even, and what if the person's not came in two years?
That's also.
But is that a reason for the mayor's decision? Why would he ask you? You said you're gonna be either. Is that a reason?
I just think it should be brought upon by the city council or the mayor.
That's.
I think, uh, make a recommendation.
Yes. Just, so, uh, cause, so after, let me see, root for cause.
Do you know the name of this? This is something I've, I've, I've never heard of that. Him or Patman, whatever.
And I, I can do that. I can ask Brad how, why he wrote it that way. Um, but yeah, I, that's one. I'll ask Brad that.
Yeah. The other thing, and maybe there, that is the place to put it, the old order that said, I, I believe somewhere that if you don't show up at first certain percentage of meetings, that you can be.
So, there, I did find some proportion that said that, uh, that even for the council, you need to be eighty-five percent of the meetings. It did say that.
Seems, seems reasonable that we could remove somebody if they're not, and they probably wouldn't protest if they're not coming in. I don't, I don't know.
Can you have no say? Can we remove anyone?
Probably not.
Not an enemy.
You know what? Maybe if you lower it, it's that thing that if they don't make it to sixty percent of the meetings, they are, you know, in a, in a year's period of time, then they don't be removed because sixty percent is a really low bar.
Especially when they don't meet every month. You get guys that are often than they meet.
But I mean, maybe sixty percent of the.
Meetings are hell.
Sixty percent of the meetings, oh.
I, I don't know. What, what do you guys think about that percent? Because I think that almost just becomes an automatic. If you can't make sixty percent of the meetings, that's.
I think that's pretty reasonable.
That's a pretty low bar.
How often do they meet? Or?
Once a month.
Well, they, they, well, they can, they can meet up to once a month, but if they're not, if they don't have something to go over, they don't meet. And so, that's why we need to say meetings hell rather than.
Six meetings a month.
On, on a half a day, you're, you're, you're right, ten, you're right.
Usually, usually we do not meet, um, December.
Oh, it's September?
Yeah. We put up to ten. And that much, times are special meetings, but.
Well, that's a question.
A question. It says here that each member is, shall receive comp- compensation per meeting.
Yes.
Are they being per meeting?
Thinking of.
They, they currently are, yes.
So, it's, it's only per meeting. It's not.
Per meeting, yeah.
That's right.
It's per meeting that they attend.
That they attend.
Yeah, it's per meeting they attend. So.
That's not very much.
As, as we go through, we, uh, keep attendance, roll attendance on that. So, we, we pay that accordingly.
Thank you. I appreciate the dialogue. So, next, uh, plans, city council meeting will have a public hearing regarding that. There'll be an updated version.
There may be, there may be an updated version that I'll send out and just. I will make sure it comes out before council meetings.
Me, I have a question.
Go ahead.
Uh, on the next one, G, where it says that you can't service the chair for more than two consecutive one-year terms. Um, I'm not sure I see the rationale on that either. And, and the reason for that is some, sometimes you get someone that's experienced and, and, I mean, you know, I, I, our current chair has been the chair for quite a while. Can it?
Yeah, he took over.
For a period of. Just two years ago?
He was thirteen, yeah, that's true.
But I don't know. I, I think it depends on experience. And the thing about that is the, the mayor is making that appointment. And so, if the mayor wants to change it after a year or two years or three years, I think if it just says the mayor shall appoint a chairperson, another officer, and so maybe that's the, you know, the, the coach sec- or, you know, second chair, uh, and then leave it because the mayor, at their discretion, can appoint that chair. So, why, why do you want to limit what the mayor can do there?
I would go back and say, we're just saying that the mayor has power to remove people. It's the same thing. If we reverse this one, it's giving the pa- the mayor more power. I like having it in writing personally. Now, I don't know if it's right for every one year consecutive.
I, I think one year is really short for a chair.
Especially if they're not meeting.
It's two. It's two years, isn't it? It's just one year, but they can serve two years.
But maybe if it says two years and not more than two consecutive terms. So, four years is the max. But again, if the mayor has the opportunity to change it, you can change it after two years.
And it's not, to make that chair, it's not really providing any authority.
There isn't? Okay.
No, no, it's just.
It's a challenge for me to direct the meeting.
It's really not. So.
Okay.
That would be something I would suggest that we change.
Great, I like. Thank you.
How would you want to change that again?
Uh, I would say two years, so a term of, of two years and not hold a position of chair for more than two consecutive, two-year terms.
It's still a two-year term.
Right?
They don't.
They're not gonna be, then they will serve for one year.
They can really go for six years, right? Because they can do two consecutive. So, they could really do four years. But I understand what you're saying.
But, but it's like that when you're, you know, you, you, if you don't, if you don't re-up your, you know, your term home one year, then the mayor's gonna appoint someone else. That's why I'm not even sure why it needs to be in there.
Like I said, I, I, I will tell you, a lot of this is from other cities, how they've changed their planning commission, um, response to movements and those kinds of things. And updated theirs. So, and that's, I will tell you, a lot of the work probably has come from that. So, in the two years, are we still talking about two terms on the three years or do we think that's a three years? Three times.
I think it should be three years, but I think.
I don't think we've said anything that might change.
I think it should just. So, total two years.
I, I agree with Mark.
And then the sixty percent thing, that's only about seven weeks. And I think it's more like seventy-five percent. I'd be lying. So.
The problem is.
If, if we have ten meetings a year, they're hitting six. I, I think sixty.
I think, I think.
I think sixty percent is good.
I think the, the sixty percent is just to give a small amount of leeway. The expectation really is that you're, that they're more like.
Yeah.
Should be enough at least.
Yeah, like that, that's kind of.
And I think that's why it wasn't said is to the, your expectation. Here it is. It says, once a month. That's what you do when you sign up. It's once a month. And when you, when you take that, it's once a month.
Yeah, I mean.
If, if they're doing less than that, I.
I just feel like they're not.
I think that's another part of that one where, where you come back and say, hey, you missed five meetings this year. We want to replace you.
I feel like.
Yeah, I think that's the point. I don't think you have to fight that out. So, because then they come back and say, yeah, but I got six that, or I got five or one or four of them.
I feel like they're not really trying that hard if they're not able to do sixty percent.
I.
That's why I like, maybe it is, it is a worth putting a percentage in.
Well, yeah, because then we actually do something. I think at seventy-five, maybe you say, oh, you know, let's cut you some slack. But at sixty, sixty, we're done with the slack. Um, Brandon Green did say one other thing that I wondered. So, going back to your two consecutive terms that, that they can serve, uh, three-year terms. He said, one of the things you might consider when you, when you talk about the chair and the, and the two-year and two consecutive, uh, two-year terms. What he suggested is if you have someone that is the chair and you want them to serve another year or another, he said, another three-year term. But maybe we say, um, uh, up here in the title, in the term limits, we say unless the person is serving as chair of the planning commission and if they're serving as chair, then they serve an extra year. And, and instead of just an extra six months. Just to give some continuity there. And then that fixes the G as well as, as.
Was that, I, I, I just have one question on that. Does that change how they're divided up? Does it not all change? Every year changed every?
That's true.
And if you start and say, oh, you've been there a year, now I've got two people, then pretty soon they're all the same here.
You're right.
It creates a, a far issue down the road by, by allowing that?
Yeah, I'll back off on that one.
Great. Good discussion. Let's move on to item number five point four, budget questions.
So, I just put this on here because I know that, uh, we got the operation budget coming up to adopt with our, um, tax rate that will happen on the seventeenth of this month. Uh, I hope that we had a good chance to go through the budget. There was one change that I had sent back out on, uh, was with the audit. Uh, we have a out for RFPs right now for, uh, getting into auditor. Uh, as I've talked to the different individuals that are bidding on it, a couple of them have said that, just a heads up, when you're in the budget right now, um, would probably be at to the twenty fifteen, twenty thousand dollars because of some of the state law requirements that they have to do. So, just be mindful of that. So, I changed that number to twenty thousand and then back down on the bottom, I changed, uh, the contribution to one of the other funds. And it just automatically goes straight down that. So, um, hopefully it will not be that much. I have. I believe I sent it out to seven different individuals, um, that do audits right now for cities or those kind of things. Um, they were recognized by different cities that I called and a couple of other people that I talked to. Uh, so, so far, six of them had said, yes, they will be going on the RFP and then getting that back to me by the twentieth of June. And then, once I get that, we will look at that for approval for the first of July timeframe because of that's one of those days. And we will start beginning the audit process soon after that.
Thank you.
One of the questions that I had for Darren, um, the, the budgetism is one of our major responsibilities. And we used to, and many cities still do, um, talked a little bit more specifically about employee compensation. And, um, I think, Darren, I started thinking about it. Um, and maybe that's one of those things that each one of us just needs to come in and talk to you individually about. Um, and the reason I say that is I think it's important to understand that if we don't pay our employees, um, a competitive wage, we can spend all the money to train them and as soon as they're trained, they will leave us. And so, I would maybe want to encourage each of us to go in and, and talk to you about specific, uh, employee compensation.
Yes, anytime.
Thank you. Let's move on to item number five point five, which is fireworks now.
So, uh, once again, it's that time of year. Um, and I just wanted to bring this back up to the city council that with all the new insurance costs that are put out to people, the people are losing their insurance and the new, uh, wild fire interface, uh, is this something that the city council wants to go back and look at and change the boundaries of the map? And, um, where we allow fireworks, where we allow, uh, open fires, uh, right now, open fires is a, a no unless it's in an approved fire pit. But as far as fireworks, right now, we currently allow here at the city building. As you know, last year after the fourth and twenty-fourth, we did have residents asking us to move it. It's been here ever since we started. Um, and I feel like it's an opportunity to have it moved to a different part of the city. I know, uh, some of their surrounding communities are latent. It's nothing east of eighty-nine for sure for any kind of fireworks. Some of the other communities, UZI fifteen has a port ship and, uh, was just, and I just needed to come back to the council because this is, uh, something that we'll take it a few to write up and get it changed and get it not changed.
I.
I don't know if the council is, wants us to work on this or not. So, that's why I'm leaving this to the council for some correction. And my suggestion would be that we have every. And I think we've heard, this is a degree that we give in area, we had a lot of lines, we got a lot of, that was. So, I'm learning. Yes.
No, I.
So, the, the, I don't know if it was part of the shape of the way right there.
Yeah.
Um, which is another, already on the map as far as a fire hazard. And I don't know if, I don't know if we really need it. I mean, what's the purpose of that? We don't set off fireworks in the city. Is that where people could come from?
Yeah.
So, when they set that off, it was for individuals available to, just come here and light them off in one area. So, it was a little more controlled.
I like the idea of having a place that they can go because if you, if you don't give them a place that they can go, some, a some percentage will find a place.
Right.
That's inappropriate.
Um, uh, and there will, many will not. They'll, they'll, they'll obey the law, but.
I think we should leave it as is. People in our community know what it is. It's been that way for years. Plus, now we have all that residential up behind, um, Rockloft Estate, all that road up there and there's just dirt and all that. So, that gives us an even bigger buffer. I, I, I like the map as it is just to not confuse people. I mean, one month before.
That area, I mean, not taking the city out, but that other lower area, it makes that just a little bit.
I think people will still light them off in that area just because they've been able to for years.
But, but here's one thing too, is why, what, if there's really not a problem, why limit people? And so, so you, I think you have to look and say, have we had problems and what are our chances of having problems in some of these areas? And I think that areas, particularly east of eighty-nine in that, in that northern area, there's not been any problems there. That, there, those are not, you know, heavily forested like they are down Green Road, uh, uh, Green Road, but, um, Nichols Road.
You got a woodchuck, pretty forested. All I know is there was two residents, I don't know who they were, in that area that made the call.
In the which area?
The area that's open for fireworks.
In the north or the west?
In our, in our area.
Cause, cause I know in the city, it's, we've had people complain about having it here. The Crisbers, um, it really bothers their dogs.
Well, I'm not talking about here. I'm talking about that area east of eighty-nine.
Yeah. Is that just people who don't like the noise or is it a safety issue?
They said it was a fire safety issue.
Well, it's just this, it's on the map. If I understand right, it's just this, it's just this city, if I'm looking at it right. It's just this city, the city area that we're talking about, isn't it?
Talking about Gary.
They're in east of eighty-nine. I don't think it's.
I'm sorry, you don't have a pointer.
This area here. My thought process is if you have everything east of eighty-nine, it's very easy. So, I was talking about this.
So, just so you know, it's that way, but okay.
Yeah, it's that way. It's that way on the map. You're looking, it's that way if that works.
Right.
Like I said, this is just something that I'm just looking for some direction from the council, uh, with all the different. Fire insurance stuff that's going on right now. Is that something that we want to look at and show?
My house west of eighty-nine was denied by the rest of insurance because, because of fire. My house west of eighty-nine was denied by progressive insurance because, because of fire.
Well, yeah, the wildfire interface.
Yep.
It, it increased a, a big distance over this last year, year.
My house was denied by progressive insurance.
Well, progressive pulled out the whole city.
I'm not wildfire. Wildfire from, I will tell you, uh, talking with the fire marshal and stuff for that, and just talking to why, uh, it is the wildfire that happened in California, killed the people, it's billions and billions of dollars. Um, insurance companies are going bankrupt, and it's easy to say, "We will cover for a kind of wildfire", and if it falls within the fire, wildfire interface, which has been increased, um, by the Forest Service because of ashes and ambers that can come off the mountain, uh, there's, it's a bigger area that you struggle to get fire treatment.
I guess I'm not sure that, if we, if we were to restrict it from eighty-nine, that that would change anything with insurance.
I don't, I don't think it would change anything with insurance, but as a reminder, as part of the community wildfire insurance program that we're part of, if we are showing, not only that we are providing information, which we do for the best space around the home, we provide these different options, this is one more option that we can turn around and say, "Hey, we went through, we were, this area was close enough to the mountain, we now line it up with this", it's just one of those other options that it's easy to show that the city is looking at those things, not only as a city, but we're, we're looking for residents too. Because that's a protection to our residents.
Isn't it, isn't it proof that we're looking at it per this conversation?
Yes, yeah, and this would be something, as we get ready to do the reports, it will be, one thing I'll put down, hey, we were in our council meeting on this day, and we did talk about wildfires, we talked about prevention, we talked about boundaries for fireworks.
Yes, so-
So Darren, I've heard two kind of proposals. This isn't something we're holding on, we're seeking direction.
Yes, direction, please.
First, uh, one person said, "Let's keep it", and I've heard one person-
I know, let's take out the door.
Let's just do a quick straw poll of what we want, the direction we want to give that. Um, any, anything?
I'll, I'll just go first then. I would just, my personal view is leave it.
Leave it?
Okay.
I would say leave it, but if we're trying, should we try to do it to prevent fires? I would also have to do it west side. And if you look down Hayes Trail, you only have one set of homes between the homes and the forest. You have to move that back another street. Should we try to prevent, okay, you see the drive-off?
Yeah.
Let's go to prevent, that's true, correct. But, but I also say leave it as is, that's my thing.
You, you could take it right here, you can come right down, stay on the city boundaries.
That would be the maximum protection.
And do the city boundary, or the whole section. It would be maximum protection for the area that's off the earth, area.
Okay.
Yeah, that's two different ones.
So now I have three.
But we're pretty worried about it.
I think, I, I think, I think he said, he was saying, "Don't worry about it", "But if we're getting extreme in this",
Yeah, that's part of it.
I, I guess I'm trying to, because you, you can't have two answers, right? You gotta have one.
So we're not doing this for insurance, we're just doing this for the safety of our, our residents.
Okay.
Eric? As our emergency, as our emergency preparedness person, do you have an opinion?
I don't have firearms, I want to cancel it all. I think everything on east of eighty-nine, no firearms. I have to change insurance.
Mark? I would say, I think east of eighty-nine is appropriate. But I think we can communicate that a lot easier than having private streets, streets, uh, kind of these streets.
Hello?
I think leave it as is if they're having any problems. I mean, they, they have respected their rights.
Ellie?
I think, probably leave it.
Okay.
Frankly, we will leave it as is.
Item number six point one is approved and denied, development agreement, here, excuse me. That is moved for next city council meeting. Item number six point two is approve the May twenty, twenty twenty-five city council minutes. I would like to motion to approve minutes.
Make a, a motion to approve the minutes with corrections. Um, Ellie, we, I, I know Flo and I think both sent in some corrections.
I did, yes.
You didn't, okay. I, I added some corrections, does anyone have any objections? I did it yesterday, so.
All right.
So, uh, as corrected.
Okay, so a motion for my lead. Have a second?
I'll second it.
Second from Flo, all in favor of approved minutes, as corrected, say aye.
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 Um, we're onto calendar items, June sixth, seventeenth, the city council public hearing. Uh, on that, we will have the development agreement, and we'll have the, uh, Title III A update. June nineteenth, um, the city will be closed. June twenty-fourth is planning question. We don't have a pass, items, city council board.
Do the residents have a vote?
We, we don't, definitely not right now, we're going to ban something in the city.
Sean, do you have anything?
Um, June ninth, um, Mountain Bike Team, Davis, is going to be out working on a trail.
Awesome.
They will be there, they will be presented to the city health, um, and, oh, you know, so they're going to be, they should be involved.
Excellent.
I thought about that.
Okay, Sean, can I ask you something? Did you ask them where the, like, the starting point, where the trails?
I did not, but I can, they-
Will you, will you ask that right there? Because that would be, I want to have to do it, so.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you. And can you just get a rough head count, and it's been a number of hours that people were, were here, and just get that back to Darren Lee? Thank you. Um, Mountain Bike Team did a time trail last night, it was actually really fun at home. Saw that, over, the Davis, I'm not like, team did a time trail from the church on the north end of the city, up Terrace, to three last round, through loops. It was, it was a lot of people, it's fun. Um, I, I asked the sheriff to just have his life on, on that road. Um, Ellie?
Um, I'm glad to see you on here, because last time, um, we didn't mention this, but, um, the museum committee has put up some lovely signs-
Yes.
-to help us remember some of our history throughout the city. And I would like to take a moment and say thank you for doing that. Um, as I'm sure we all appreciate.
Yes.
Appreciate that. Um, so, um, Mary Monson and I have been working closely with the emergency preparedness committee. Um, we'll be, uh, presenting at the next meeting a little bit, and then, we're working on putting a plan together for what our topics will be, um, throughout the next year.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for allowing us to have that time.
Karen?
I don't have anything, thank you.
Hello?
Yes, well, I have sent out a couple of flyers for those CTC activities.
Yeah.
Which is what was, I didn't realize that that was the one that was connected with volunteering for YCC. So, if you know people that would like to come to those activities, please encourage them, and, and let's send those out. Um, also, I told us my neighbor that I would, um, pass on his concern about the recycling container that does not fit, it's a small garage, and his HOA says he can't have it anywhere but inside the garage and set on garbage day, and he doesn't have room for two cans, and so he wants to give his can back to the city with data of rise. So I realized that that's an issue, but I promised that I would bring it up and ask about it.
Thank you, Flo.
And then, for the three, we need an unsung kilo, if anybody has ideas on that. Who's left the mayor for?
Thank you. Mark? Nothing. Um, I don't have anything. Um, we will be moving to a closed session to discuss the sale or the acquisition of real property. Um, I don't have anything else. Jeff Wiler, do you have anything?
No.
Darren?
Uh, just a heads up, I will be out of town for next week and a half.
Dude, it's two weeks, come on, man.
Pretty close. Week and a half, so.
Well deserved.
Well deserved. Uh, we'll have my phone, so.
Thank you. Um, I would look for an intended motion to move into closed session.
Motion to move into closed session.
To discuss the acquisition of-
To discuss the acquisition of?
Real property.
Uh, real property?
Real property.
Real property.
So a motion from Gary, second from Mark. All the arrangements closed session, say aye.
Aye.
Uh, we are, any hosts, we're moving in at eight o'clock.